Please join me in a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. And Lord, I just ask a blessing on the councilors that are before me here this evening. I ask them to ask you to give them their guidance, give them your knowledge, your wisdom, on the decisions and actions that they have to decide and vote on. Father, we thank you for giving their wisdom to us, Lord. We honor you, we praise you, and give you thanks, in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. With that, I will call the meeting to order and ask that you please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. With the full room, that sounds especially good up here, since all of that sound comes this direction when we do the pledge. Rose, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Boger.
Here.
Councilmember Greenlee.
Here.
Councilmember Lindsay.
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Councilmember Corsi.
Here.
Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
Good. Michelle, we've got you on the line. You can hear us okay, and we can hear you okay?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Rose, you've got some correspondence that has come in in the last week or so that you have put together for the council, and all councilmembers should have hard copies of that, as well as a spreadsheet that Rose put together. Everybody has that? Wonderful. Michelle, my apologies that you probably don't have it. She does have it. Okay.
Actually, I did get -- Rose was kind enough to email me that this afternoon.
Perfect. Thank you. With that, we will go to public comments. This evening is a special meeting, so public comments are really limited just to those items that are on the agenda, which is an emergency ordinance eliminating the marijuana sunset provisions, also an optional proposed emergency ordinance which extends the marijuana sunset provisions and calling for an advisory vote. And we also have on the agenda a resolution potentially setting an advisory vote regarding marijuana uses. So those are really the only three items that -- Dan, go ahead and have a seat. Those are the only three items that can be spoken about during this evening during a special meeting. Now, we did have last Monday a public hearing, of which we had quite a few folks who testified during, and with the concurrence of the council. Last week, we cut it down to two-minute timeframes for folks to be able to speak. Normally, we try and keep a three-minute one. Given the fact we went two and a half hours on that one alone, I'm going to suggest, if it's okay with council, if they are individuals who have spoken before previously during the public hearing itself, that we have a one-minute limitation for those who may be new that haven't spoken, a two-minute limitation in there. And if you are one of those individuals who was here to speak last week, that you not simply repeat what you had last week. So I've got a pretty good memory on what happens during those and notes that I make as they go through. So if we've got a concurrence on the council for that, those are the rules that we'll operate under. Do I hear any objections? Okay. With that, if individuals would come to the microphone, give your name, address, and your testimony, please. Good evening, Harvey.
Good evening, Mayor. Short. Harvey Olson, 3903 R Street. We have heard from citizens that are for and against pot sales in Washtugle. I'm limiting pot to marijuana. All of these arguments should be weighed with one thing in mind: Is the sale of marijuana an enrichment or a detriment for Washtugle's citizens, or a cash cow for a few? Citizens also said if alcohol beverages are legal, why not pot? The answer is simple: The federal government says alcohol is legal, pot is not. Petition your state senators to change federal law on pot. Washtugle cannot. Today's Columbian has an article that quotes Mr. Richard Brenton's presentation at the public hearing that the National Institute of Drug Abuse says the addiction rate of pot users is 9 percent. He also said that alcohol is more addictive without giving his source.
Harvey, if you could go ahead and give the rest of your comments to Rose, that would be great.
That's it.
Thank you. And Rose, just to double check, do we have the sound system on out in the hallway as well? Great. Thank you. Thank you, Harvey.
Yep. Is it one or two minutes or one?
Anyone else that would like to address council? Trust me, don't wait, because I'm going to move right along. So once I see folks not getting up, we'll go to council deliberations. So, good evening.
Hi. Gail Anderson, 2228 38th Court. I did speak last time, and there's a couple of things I just wanted to comment to. Regarding the land use, it sounds like that's all about money. Who's going to bring in the tax revenue? There are other organizations, other businesses that we can support that will be a more healthy option for our community. Our community has voted, and there was a survey, and it really said, "We don't want this in our community," and it's your job to listen to the community, and that's what they did, in fact, say. You don't think this is about kids? The students who participated in the Draw the Lines survey make it very clear that it is. The advertising is really directly towards kids. When I drive down the street and I see in front of businesses that sell paraphernalia, they're dressed up in Halloween costumes. I don't care about SpongeBob. Kids do. The black market will continue. They do not sell, they do not charge sales tax, and they can and will continue to sell to children. So this isn't going to eliminate that option. And I do have compassion for people who benefit from the medicinal benefits, and I think there's options for them as well.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Gerg.
Good morning, Mr. Gerg. My name is Jeff Garg. I live at 4105 Gifford Place in Washtugle. I understand everything you're going to be addressing tonight. However, my point is, why are we wasting time on something that was passed by the voters in November of 2012, 56 percent to 44 percent? I've heard the argument that, yeah, Clark County didn't vote that way, and Washtugle didn't vote that way, but it's a statewide initiative. It's not a Washtugle initiative. I mean, what do you want to do next? Go precinct by precinct or house by house? The voters have spoken. So basically, you've been kicking the can down the road for almost four years now. You're doing the same thing the state legislature did in 2012 by refusing to take action on a state initiative already approved by voters, and that didn't work. It was a statewide initiative, not a city Washtugle ballot. An advisory vote just prolongs the ongoing hypocrisy and the failure of this body to honor the will of the people. I don't see why you need an advisory vote. You had a vote, 2012 statewide initiative, 56 to 44. So continuing to stick your head in the sand just continues to fringe out my rights and other people's rights as medically qualified card-carrying med marijuana patients. It is a medical alternative. It's real. It's legal. The jury is not still out, like I saw some people say. Their facts have been out there for many, many years. The U.S. itself has grown and provided medical pot for patients for almost 40 years. They have a farm in Mississippi, among other places. So what's wrong with it? Also, medical marijuana focuses, CBDs, not the THC's. Get a high percentage of CBD pot does not get you high. We're not talking about getting high. And I'm focusing on medical, because right now, there are no medical shops in Clark County. I have to go elsewhere to get medical marijuana, and that's not right. My rights are not recognized in the state of Oregon, and the state of Oregon's rights are not recognized in the state of Washington. That's something wrong, too, that needs to be addressed at a higher level. But it's a much better product than getting put -- excuse me?
You're over time.
So again, there are no med shops in there. I haven't mentioned tax revenue, but you are blowing off a real viable resource.
Jeff, you can give your notes to Rose.
Why was it two minutes when everything listed up there was three minutes? Well, I want to go on the record, I had more to say, but...
Understood. You'll give them to Rose.
You'll type it up and get it in an email.
Okay.
Good evening. I've got some...
Thank you.
Please, to sync, Dan, I've already started the timer.
Has it started?
Yep.
Good evening, councilors. I'm not sure what can be done tonight on the marijuana, but at least the sunset date needs to be extended. You are councilors, you're the highest public safety authority in this city. It's you who have the first duty to keep the place safe, especially for vulnerable youth and others. Restricting marijuana availability, as is allowed by law, will reduce the drug's presence and commercialization in the community. And marijuana's negative consequences, marijuana sales for the city should not be determined by the majority of an advisory vote, but by you, in consideration of your responsibility to protect. Any vote, result, for or against shouldn't be the defining factor. Marijuana isn't harmless.
Dan, you can go ahead and give your notes to Rose if you would like. Anyone else that would like to address council? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Marvin Wong, 2501 Southeast 396th Place, Washtugle. Okay, so I'm trained as a biochemist, and one of the things that I've observed that are differences between the effects of marijuana metabolically and alcohol is alcohol clears the body rapidly. It clears, and it's basically gone by either excretion or being metabolized to combustion products. Marijuana sticks around a lot longer. It has to go through the liver, and it gets extruded through the feces mostly, which is a slow way of getting rid of it. And so it hangs around the body a lot longer. And my main concern as a biochemist and as a parent is if people are indulging in marijuana, it's not going to clear their bodies as fast as it would if it were alcohol, and so there are chances that not only the day after are they going to be hungover, but they also have the potential of having the drugs still having an effect on them. And when kids are going to school or people are trying to get to work, here are these stone people driving down the road, potentially endangering the other folks who are trying to use the roads. So again, I believe that this is primarily a public safety issue, and I would request your support in decreasing the availability of this in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Michelle, I just want to make sure you can still hear us.
Yes, loud and clear. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Melinda.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. I'm Melinda Dunn. I'm at 435 North Y Street. So I have four teenagers, 19, 17, 15, and 13, and I'll tell you, it's really hard to raise them all now. You're telling them every time you make a judgment like this that this is good, it's legal, and it's okay. I'm actually a respiratory sales rep. I sell asthma drugs and COPD drugs. And when I trained 20 years ago, marijuana wasn't even on the list of COPD, which, if you're not familiar, is a very horrible way to die and a very terrible disease. Number one reason you get COPD is cigarettes, and the second now, I just retrained again, again selling respiratory, is now marijuana. Was not even on the list 20 years ago. So when my parents were in the depression era, when they found out cigarettes caused cancer, they quit. Made sense. They knew if they did, their children would model their behavior. So now we're saying it's okay to smoke marijuana. It's going to come out eventually that it causes cancer, too. It just makes sense. Do we have to really wait? Do we have the statistics? We have the fatality rates? What I handed out today was just in one year, the more than doubling of fatalities in the state of Washington noted by the AAA studies, and they're warning to other states that are going to legalize it of all the kids and the people that are going to die because of this substance. Now, it isn't as high as alcohol dying, because it's only one-year statistics, but you tell those families that doubled, those families that had those people die, children, parents, other people that died from the people smoking the marijuana, you tell them, "This is okay." I don't want this in my town. I want my children to know their town cares about them, and I pray you make the right decision.
Thank you, Melinda. Anyone else? Yes. Good evening.
Good evening. Blake Perkins, 3204 P Street. Just as a parent of five children, three of which, one of which has graduated from Washtugle High School, two of which are attending there this year, I know firsthand from their reports that marijuana use among teenagers at Washtugle is a big problem. And as a parent, that scares me to death to know that the possibility is there for people to obtain marijuana outside of the way that it's been obtained already. As a medical professional, I know that there are medicinal benefits to marijuana, and that's not under argument. The question is, is what do we want for our community, for the safety of our children, as has been mentioned before? And my dad taught me a phrase a long time ago, and he said, "Just because something is legal does not mean that it's right." Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Don Cox. I'm at 513 C Street Avenue, apartment 14, Washtugle. I've lived here all of my life. I was born and raised here in Washtugle. I'm a retired bus driver, and in 1962, there was a lady scientist, and I'm not sure if there's any of you here that might have seen this program, it was on 60 Minutes, and she defected from Russia and came over here to the United States. And she said that they had, in the 1950s, beginning in the mid-'50s, that they had been using marijuana as an experiment on animals, lab animals. And they found that in the third generation after continued use, that the damage done to the brain was permanent. So they started their experiment in South America with the people, and it graduated up into El Salvador and Mexico. They wanted to make it appear as if it was emanating from that section of the country rather than in Russia. And my question is, how many people in our government really know all this information and are not doing anything about it? Because it does permanent damage after the third generation, as is said. And I, being a bus driver, I've seen changes happen in children. That's why I wanted to address this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Good evening, Roxy.
Hello. My name is Roxanne Renton, 12692 Washtugle River Road, Washtugle, Washington, and I am an I-502 processor grower. And I just want to give you some of the statistics and filings for low-level marijuana offenses, and this was a one-year status report, are down 98 percent for adults under 21. All categories of marijuana law violations are down 63 percent, and marijuana-related convictions are down 81 percent since passing of I-502. The state is now saving millions of dollars in law enforcement's resources that they previously used to enforce marijuana laws. Violent crime has decreased in Washington State. Washington State has collected $83 million in tax revenue. That lot of it goes to funding substance abuse, prevention, treatment programs, adult and youth programs. The number of traffic fatalities have remained the same. Youth marijuana use has not increased since passage of I-502, and if it has, it's certainly not coming from a legal marijuana store, because I guarantee you, any 121 will never get in, and if you're 83, you're going to be carded. You're not going in or hanging out at a legal marijuana store. What you're doing is telling the people of Washtugle that want to get and want to buy marijuana, that you must get on a bus, and I have two minutes, or go to Vancouver, or not in my town, so you're just going to inconvenience. They're going to get it anyway. The kids are going to get it legally, if they're going to get it, but they're not going to get it from an I-502. And I want to tell you, if you want to be concerned about safety, I guarantee you can walk in Safeway and buy some tomatoes, and there's more pesticides on those tomatoes than there will ever be on our marijuana, because they don't have guys coming in with guns and chesting your marijuana. So pesticide-free, safe, and you're just inconveniencing these people and making them go elsewhere. But they're going to get it if they want it.
Thank you, Roxy.
And here's those three words.
Anyone else that would like to address council? Good evening.
Good evening. Jim Delany, 2668 North L Street. I've been a member of this community for 15 years. When I came here, I was doing my due diligence, and I was told that the high school was drug-infested. The beauty of the area outweighed that. I took a chance, and I'm very happy to be here. You know, the motto for the city is gateway to the gorge. This is a beautiful place. Let them do it somewhere else. What's the point? It adds nothing to the community. I have two drug houses in my neighborhood that are being, you know, people talk about kicking the can down the road. One's been going on for over 10 years, probably longer, and the other one's been very active for, too, a very prominent house in my neighborhood. It's disgusting what's happened. This serves no purpose. It really doesn't. We are the prettiest girl in the room. Let them do it in camus. Who cares that they do it there? You know, they can look down their nose at us. Okay, fine, you've got pot, though. You know, think about it. And also, too, we are the gateway to the gorge, which means Highway 14, so, you know, people go out on a day, "I'm going to go up the gorge." That's a dangerous road. Let's get stoned on the way up, because it's retail. Medical channels can take care of those that need it for that purpose. So anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else that would like to address council? Good evening.
Hello. I'm Bernie Bacon. I live at 1912 North Columbia Ridgeway, which is a new neighborhood. I'm new to the city. Hello, mayor and council. Thank you for allowing us to comment this evening. I'm learning to love Washtugle, and I want to continue to love it, and I'm asking that you please continue to, the moratorium or a ban on what you're considering this evening, like Polesbo and Leavenworth and Pomeroy and Richland. There's nothing wrong with a wait-and-see stance. This is all fairly young for our state, and Oregon is now entering into this territory, and there's nothing wrong with, you know, just taking a wait-and-see stance and watching what happens throughout the state and in other communities. So I'm urging you to do that. The World Health Organization is a great resource for the health of the world, and they offer a lot of information about cannabis and its use and its long-term effects, and I've been studying about it myself and have found that to be a great resource. And just like we have to go to Vancouver to go to Costco or Olive Garden or a hospital, it doesn't have to be available here. It's available in Vancouver. And anyway, I just thank you so much for your consideration, and I can see that you're taking this all seriously, and I appreciate that. As a citizen of Washtugle, thank you.
Hi. I'm Paulina West, we're at 1411 North 25th Circle, and we likewise have a problem with drug houses in our neighborhood. And whether it's legal or not doesn't change the fact that it's bad for the development, brain development of those who use it, and the brain is not fully developed until a person is 24 years old. I'm concerned about that for kids. And so the main point that I would like to make, though, is that when people get caught selling drugs and they get busted, and they go to court, found guilty, go to jail in aggravating circumstances if they sold it near a school, or if they sold it near certain churches and things like that. And I noticed that all of these stores that are ready to go into business are right by schools, right by churches, within one block of places where you buy sodas, and right by parks where there are curly slides. So that's a real problem. That's an aggravating circumstance, and they definitely shouldn't be advertising drugs. Our country should be a place where we reward hard work and focus and responsibility, and we should be discouraging people from doing things like selling and using drugs. That's just the kind of statute that we like in this county. Oh, and so...
You're okay. You've still got 30 seconds.
Oh, okay. So let's see. In conclusion, I think one in eight Americans are going onto food stamps right now, and I think there's a real problem with adding drugs to people being, sitting around on unemployment and food stamps and making drugs legal. This is very bad. And next, you're going to start asking for drug houses that the state is going to pay for, like they are up in King County. Sorry, I was nervous, but thank you very much.
You're okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Sidney, how are you?
Hi, I'm good. So City Madero's, 31824 Northeast 9th Street. So I said last time, I was talking about our community and the children in our community and growing up with it, and I'm thinking that this is more detrimental to having the students being influenced by this. There is a choice to use it, which is okay, but it's better to, okay, so it's better in our community to have this choice, not have people be pushed to a certain way. And if one wants to obtain marijuana and buy it, they can go 20 or 30 minutes to Vancouver. So, yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll turn this back over to the council. Thank you for everyone who has spoken. Thank you for everyone who was here last week as well. Certainly, I know the council is interested in making sure that we've got your input and that we make the right decision. I think between last week's meeting and today's meeting with the number of people here tells you how important this decision is for the community. So stay tuned, and we'll be to the discussion here shortly. With that, we are to the consent agenda, council. This evening, your consent agenda has just two items on it, your workshop minutes of August 22, 2016, and your council minutes of August 22, 2016.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we approve the consent agenda.
Bearing no objections, so ordered. Which brings us to new business, Agenda Bill 68-16. And I do want to make sure and ask the question, as we started into this last week, we did have two councilmembers who were absent from the discussion, the public hearing, Councilmember McDaniel and Councilmember Wagner. I know we provided links to the audio tapes and videos for them, and I just want to make sure both of you got up to speed on the discussions that took place last week.
Yes, I did.
Michelle?
Yes, I listened to the two hours and 38 minutes of it. I'm very happy to get the input from the public and found it extremely important and informative, and I feel the community pretty much spoke long clearly to the direction they want our community to move in.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. David, do you want to walk this one on?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. So in your packet, there are basically two options, and they stem from what was on the table at your last meeting last week. These are different ordinances than was on the table last week, primarily because they're now emergency ordinances. Last week, they were not emergency ordinances. So there's nothing on your table right now. However, in your packet, Exhibit A is essentially the ordinance that represents the Planning Commission's recommendation. It eliminates the marijuana sunset provisions and declares an emergency. That would require five affirmative votes this evening to pass, and if it did, then it would take effect immediately. Exhibit B is essentially the ordinance that was presented as an amendment last week by Councilman Boger. It is now also an emergency ordinance, so it's been revised from what was on the table last week to be an emergency ordinance. It extends the sunset provision. It does not eliminate the sunset provision, extends it until the end of January 2018, and it calls for the staff to take all the steps necessary to establish an advisory vote. Both of those ordinance have attached code language to affect the provisions of the ordinance. And then Exhibit C in your packet is actually a resolution that would do just that. It would set an advisory vote, and the date that is in the resolution and in the ordinance is the April special election in 2017, not the general election. So I won't get into all of the background that Mitch got into last week. I think we've been well through all of that information. So the recommended action tonight is, following the Exhibit A course, it would be to authorize the city attorney to read the emergency ordinance in Exhibit A by title only. That ordinance would remove the sunset provisions as they pertain to marijuana cooperatives and recreational marijuana uses within the Waschugul Municipal Code, and then to pass, post, and publish that ordinance in the usual manner. Or the Exhibit B track would be to authorize the city attorney to read the emergency ordinance in Exhibit B by title only, which ordinance would extend the sunset provisions as they pertain to marijuana cooperatives and recreational marijuana uses within the city, extending that to January 31st, 2018, and setting an advisory vote, and then to pass, post, and publish that ordinance in the usual manner. And that would also, yes, Dawn is reminding me, both of these are emergency ordinances and require five affirmative votes to pass as an emergency ordinance. And then it would follow, if the counsel was to pass that ordinance, that Exhibit B ordinance, there's a resolution that's a companion to that for your consideration that would go ahead and set that advisory vote. So with that...
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that the city attorney read the emergency ordinance in Exhibit A by title only.
Bearing no objections, so ordered.
An ordinance declaring an emergency and amending portions of Waschugul Municipal Code Title 18 zoning regarding medical marijuana cooperatives and recreational marijuana producers, processors, and retailers in the city of Waschugul.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, that we pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. Counsel, discussion. Brent?
First, I have a question for either the city attorney or a city administrator. Would it be possible to pass A, and then with some modifications, also adopt Exhibit C to place it on the ballot for an advisory vote in April? And the modification would be to delete the reference for the sunset on January 31st, 2018?
There's no reason why the counsel couldn't establish an advisory vote any time.
Okay. I'll make my comments now, if that's okay. Over the course of the last week, I learned a few things. First of all, one of the things that I learned was from our superintendent about drug use being fifty percent, if I get this correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Strong, but it is doctor, right?
Correct.
Okay. That our drug problem is fifty percent worse here than it is countywide. Did I...
Of the 2014 Healthy Youth Survey, which was our sophomores in 2014, they were the seniors that graduated last year, the students who took that survey as sophomores, the rate of marijuana use for that group of students compared to the same group of sophomores in a county or the state was fifty percent higher than both.
Was there any noticeable deterioration in the, is there a trend line on that at all?
It's up.
It's growing, well, because I'd heard from the center that actually after, they've got, do you have the results for 2015?
They only do the survey every other year, so actually, we're actually preparing to take the survey at the high school level, sophomores and seniors take it, and it'll happen this fall.
Okay, I have a, Colorado did the survey, and they were selling, had retail marijuana, you know, even though they adopted at the same time, because they had a functioning medical system, it got in place sooner, and there was no noticeable uptick in student marijuana use as a result of their law. So I'm not exactly sure where all this leads, and it really isn't a land use issue. And the other thing that the mayor had me reflect on was this, related to this, was reputation, and you referred to that, sir, about the reputation of the city being...
Wrong comment, please.
Well...
If you have one, just quickly.
No, sir. My apologies.
Okay, there's a death in my neighborhood in one of those houses, not in thirty days.
Okay, sir. Was the reputation, and adding a marijuana shop here might not, would not be very good for that. But I still get to, so I guess what I'm saying, where I'm getting to, is I would support this ban if it was accompanied by an advisory vote, because I think, when you really look at it, and I have to disagree with my colleague on the phone, the city is pretty closely And if we had a provision for a public vote, we could settle this once and for all, and there was some concern that marijuana money would come in here and try to move that election along. Well, we also could have our council elections in 2017 decided on your position on marijuana, and this is not that much of what we do. We don't spend all our time deciding what we're gonna do on marijuana. So at least this would take that out of it, and we'd get the say from our community on that. And then I have one last comment on it, because I'm pretty sure it's gonna pass, but I did some checking over the weekend on the current status of the litigation in the state on whether state law preempts this, and I thought it was more settled than it actually is. There's a Fife rule, a court in Pierce County ruled that the city of Fife had a, the state law didn't preempt their ordinance. It's a little different facts, because there was no assigned license in Fife, and it was argued in front of the Court of Appeals, got appealed, and it was argued in front of the Court of Appeals in January, and they've been sitting on it for a while, so I think they're taking their time with it. Usually, a Court of Appeals decision comes out about ninety days after argument. I guess what, rather than going to a long elaboration on the law, I guess what I would say is, after this passes, and I'm pretty sure the resolution won't pass either, but after this passes, I would recommend that we come back and shore it up, because I don't think there's adequate findings to support a land use ordinance, and I think that's a potential avenue of attack on this.
Thank you, Brent. Other, Dan?
As for me, I am totally in favor of Option A here as far as banning the production of marijuana in the city going forward. Not only by listening to people that testified here, but I've heard from parents ever since I moved here, that complained about the availability, the problem of drugs in the schools. So I'm very conscious of this thing, and it bothers me a great deal. And I don't think the issue of image was brought up. I don't think this is the image we want here in the city. So hopefully, we have five votes that will vote in favor of a stand-up vote, in favor of banning medical marijuana cooperatives and recreational marijuana here in the city. And if we don't, I guess we'll proceed from there.
Thank you. Joyce?
I would, I think the ban, whether we do it as an extension or as complete as an A, but I would like to see an advisory vote come out of the city. I deal with a different crowd of people than what we're hearing from tonight, but the elderly, the people with diseases, the people fighting cancer, pain, Parkinson's, MS, there's this slew of the, that are looking for alternative ways to handle pain. I don't think we've heard from them completely either, so I really support a vote from the city.
Thank you, Joyce. Michelle, we can't, I can't see you on the phone. Do you have comments that you want to interject in?
I only want to add that, listening to the public, knowing what the votes have been in the past, and considering myself mainly a representative of people, that this is a fairly easy decision for me, and it was very impactful for me to hear the superintendent comment on the status of the high school, and also listening to parents and the citizens there, talk about what kind of city they want Waschugul to look like. Marijuana will still be available. It's legal in the state of Washington. But just like we might determine what type of signage we want in our city, people have spoken as to what we want our city to look like, and the community we want our children to grow up in. That's important to me, being a mother as well. And so that's all I had to this, add to this, and I'm not in favor of a vote. I'm curious as to how many votes and surveys are required, you know, over the course of a year or two, and we've been there and done that. And thankfully, I am very sensitive to people in need of medical marijuana for their pain and ailment, but thankfully, they have a ten-minute drive to Vancouver, likewise, where I have to buy many of items for my household that unfortunately aren't offered in Waschugul, and they have access there for that type of relief for the ailments. So that's where I stand on this issue.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. Paul?
Some of you in the room know that I've put in a number of years working with Unite, the Waschugul Community Coalition, which is a prevention coalition, drugs, alcohol, and tobacco. And our most important partner is the Waschugul School District, and we are pretty much of one mind that retail marijuana, production, processing, and collective gardens, it's only collective gardens that are on the table here for medical...
Cooperative.
...are not helpful, and in fact, they're worse than that. The black market that I'm worried about is that twenty-two-year-old Davy goes down to a pot shop and buys pot, which he brings home to his sixteen-year-old sister. That's the black market that I'm worried about. It's not drug cartels. It's not that kind of thing, because we know from our surveys, both the Healthy Youth Survey, that is done statewide, and from the own, from the surveys that we've done for Unite, that the most common source of alcohol is family members, and I don't see any reason that that would change with marijuana. So there's no reason to make it easier. I think the ban should be permanent. Thank you.
David?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize for the length and the contentiousness of my remarks this evening, but the introduction of recreational marijuana into our city is a serious issue, deserving of the thorough consideration that we of a council, as a council, have given it over the last year. We didn't start on this two weeks ago. I mentioned last week that I'd had the opportunity to spend a year of my life researching for the Little Hoover Commission, a small public think tank that advises the California governor and legislature on the effectiveness and efficiency of state government, and by the way, I didn't find much, the issue of drug and alcohol abuse and its consequences. I will draw on that experience this evening and quote from the report. The report is called "For Our Health and Safety: Joining Forces to Defeat Addiction." It's on the Little Hoover website, which I believe is now part of the state auditor's website. I'll draw on my experience this evening and quote from the report. "As the primary author of this report, I feel a little compunction about quoting from it and editing it as necessary. I drafted much of what I will use from the report tonight." Let's define the issue here. The issue before us tonight is not medical marijuana, it's recreational pot. Not only is medical marijuana available in Washington and Oregon, but extracts from marijuana are available in pill and other forms from medical practitioners in these two states and three other states. The issues here tonight are whether we will, one, allow our residents to have convenient local access to a Schedule I drug; two, enable some to enrich themselves at the expense of others, including the city, which will have to cope with the increase of crime, violence, and a variety of social ills that other communities have already experienced by allowing unfettered access to mood-altering drugs like marijuana; three, facilitate the addiction to some of our citizens condemning them to a life of poverty. A comment about poverty. Poverty is not just a lack of financial resources. It is the paucity of knowledge and life experience that ill-fits an individual to survive and prosper in a free society. Moving people out of poverty and into the economic and social mainstream of society requires filling the knowledge and experience deficits to enable them to take advantage of opportunities. You can't do that with people who are too stoned to care. I concluded from my year-long study of substance abuse that it is the root cause of many, if not most, social ills. In his transmittal letter to the governor and the legislature, the Little Hoover Commission's executive director translated my primary finding into a simple plan of action. He said, "If you are concerned about public safety, address addiction. If you are worried about the cost of government, address addiction. If you are worried about abused children, homelessness, struggling families, address addiction. If you are worried about economic productivity and prosperity, address addiction." Drug and alcohol abuse is not the source of all problems, but it is a cancer in our communities that is eating away at our resources and limiting our potential. While I agree with my former mentor that substance abuse is not the cause of all problems, it is the root of many of them. Why should we offer our residents more opportunities to become addicted? Do we lack the courage to take a stand tonight? Scientists have proven addiction, addiction is not simply a lack of willpower on the part of the user. Over time, and this has been pointed out here tonight, alcohol and other drug use fundamentally changes the chemistry of the brain in long-lasting ways, making the user incapable of stopping the addiction without treatment. Why should we facilitate that kind of damage to our residents and problems for our community? The consequences of substance abuse and addiction reach far beyond addicts themselves. Families, neighborhoods, and communities are affected. In one way or another, substance abuse and addiction touches all of us. Certain populations of abusers and addicts inflict more consequences, human suffering and financial costs, but all have an impact on our community. While precise data on the impact of abuse and addiction are not available, all experts agree that the costs are enormous. The White House Office of National Drug Control Policy estimated in 2002 that the annual economic alcohol, impact of alcohol and drug abuse was about $373 billion a year. Does anyone think that these costs have declined? Look at your state and county budgets for social services. We bear a portion of that economic burden here in Waschugul as direct costs, but the indirect costs are far greater. While considerable public funds are spent directly addressing alcohol and drug abuse and addiction, an even larger sum is spent responding to the social and criminal justice problems resulting from substance abuse. Among the budgets most affected are criminal justice, education, health, child welfare, mental health, and public safety. And we don't have a long-term perspective yet on how making recreational pot legal will impact us... will impact us locally. Why are we talking about an advisory vote? It's time to take a stand on what we reasonably suspect is a problematic policy, and we need to keep recreational pot out of our city until those cities and states on the bleeding edge of social experimentation to legalize a gateway drug can provide us evidence that contradicts early indications that such policies are counterproductive, even disastrous. And despite what we've heard during last week's public hearing on this issue, children are often the victims of substance abuse, even though they can't legally purchase recreational pot. Even if children don't legal, illegally purchase recreationally, recreational pot, which is easy to do in this county, as has been pointed out in the last couple of weeks, lesions of children suffer from its easy availability. Unborn children whose mothers abuse substances suffer direct impacts on their ability to succeed in school. I'm sure you've seen this. Majority of child abuse and neglect cases involve parental substance abuse. The National Center on Addiction and Substance Abuse at Columbia University estimated in 1999 that children of substance-abusing parents are nearly three times more likely to be sexually abused, and more than four times more likely to be neglected than children whose parents are not substance abusers. The most severe neglect and abuse cases end up in the overcrowded, expensive foster care system in all states. And I, as part of the study that I did for the Little Hoover Commission, we looked at that. Estimates suggest that substance abuse is a significant factor in up to 80% of foster care cases. Foster care cases in California, when I, when I did this study in 2002, 2003, cost an average of about $6,000 a year, and there were hundreds of thousands of them. Because Sacramento County surrounds the state capital, the Little Hoover Study used it as a ready source of information on the costs of substance abuse. We discovered that substance abuse was a significant factor among clients in almost every social service department. Most clients were members of multi-problem families needing multiple services from different departments. And substance abusers were the most likely of all clients to require the services, services of multiple departments simultaneously and repeatedly. For example, 70 to 80% of child welfare cases involve drug-abusing parents. Substance abuse was also an issue in 50 to 70% of mental health patients assessed. 70% of county jail inmates suffered from such substance abuse. Why do we need an advisory vote on this issue? Because some wish to profit from bringing this misery to our city? Because some feel the need for political cover? Because we want to spend $18,000 of our taxes on a February vote? Luckily, I'd rather see the money go in the streets. If you understand what I've said here tonight, you will also understand that the added revenue from recreational pot sales that proponents promise will not be spent on fixing street, streets or other council priorities. It will be spent on dealing with social ills that arise from easy access to mind-altering substances like marijuana. There is one other major consideration arguing against delaying making permanent the ban on recreational pot in our city. I mentioned earlier that just this month, the federal government retained marijuana on the list of Schedule I drugs that are considered detrimental to the health of our communities, despite pleas from those who would prefer freedom from such restrictions in order to line their pockets. Only for the federal government. Yes, I choked all those words, but credit where credit is due. The feds did the right thing here. Unless we forget, the local federal prosecutor in his letter last year was very clear that selling marijuana remains a federal offense. That means that anyone caught selling it or facilitating a sale could be prosecuted in federal court. Does that not provide pause for thought among those of us being asked to facilitate a vote that can introduce sales of marijuana into our city? The Nurnberg defense, "I was just following orders," or the updated version, "the people voted for it," is a very poor history, has a very poor history of success in federal courts. As a council, we've been consistent over the last year in our guidance to the administration, "make the ban permanent." Now the administration has brought forward an ordinance to do exactly what we asked them to do, and been ambushed with an amendment that would extend a temporary ban until the issue can be placed on the ballot. That amendment provides the opportunity for powerful, well-heeled interests to influence a vote that will determine more than any other issue we have considered since I joined this council in January 2010, the future of our city. It is my considered opinion that anyone who votes for that amendment does not have the best interests of the city at heart. If I accomplish nothing else before I end my term on this council, I would mark the defeat of this amendment as one of the accomplishments having the most significant long-term effect on the good people of Waschugle who elected me. I urge my fellow council members to defeat the amendment and put in place a permanent ban on recreational pot sales within our city limits. Let other cities do as they will. Let us do what is right for the health and safety of our community. And let's not continue to kick the can down the road on this issue, but tonight. With regard to the proposal for an advisory vote in April of 2017, that sounds to me like a last-ditch effort to salvage a position that is demonstrably unpopular with our citizens. I see no need for pushing an advisory vote. We were elected to make decisions for the city. It's time we did so. We answer to you at the polls at the next election. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Jennifer?
I will also be, I will also be supporting the recommended action, number one, which is Exhibit A, to, to continue, actually, to ban it permanently via the planning commission recommendation and staff recommendation. In my opinion, Waschugle is well on our way to successfully improving our community. We're building family-friendly parks and recreation areas. We're attracting employers who pay higher-wage jobs. We're promoting our city through tourism. We're investing in updating and improving our schools, which will make Waschugle an even more desirable place to raise a family. Our city is changing for the better. We've heard from many concerned citizens, as well as our school district, educators, and clergy, saying that bringing businesses dealing in pot is sending the wrong message to our youth. They're urging us to not let that happen in our wonderful city, and I agree with them. My number-one priority is the overall health and well-being of my city, and I do not think that the marijuana industry promotes a safe, healthy community. Like gambling and card rooms, local government has the ability and the obligation to weigh the pros and cons of allowing marijuana businesses. It's not the image we here in Waschugle want to project, and we should permanently ban it. Thank you.
Any other council discussion? Michelle, anything further from yourself?
No, I have nothing further.
Okay. With that, I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in as usual manner. This is the ordinance that is presented as Exhibit A, which would remove the sunset provisions as they pertain to marijuana cooperatives and recreational marijuana uses within the city of Waschugle in the Waschugle Municipal Code. Rose, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Just a moment of clarification. That, in other words, makes the ban permanent?
Yes and no. You cannot make anything permanent onto another council, so it will remove the sunset that would go in on September 1st. However, even your own council at any given time can take the issue back up and make it legal within the city of Waschugle. So, or any time in the, in the near future, and probably beyond that, I would say that that you are banning it and that that would stay in place, but at any time, council could take it back up.
Thank you.
Rose, could you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Boger?
Because it's not a proper land use ordinance, or I have my doubts about it, and because it does not provide for a public vote, no.
Councilmember Wagner? Councilmember Greenly?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindsay?
No.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Councilmember Corsi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to move adoption of the resolution listed in Exhibit C with the language in the third, well, the second recital. It says, "which prohibition sunsets on January 31, 2018." That's no longer true, so I would just delete that recital, or that portion of the recital, and move the adoption of that resolution.
Can you tell us how that would read?
It would read the same, it would say, it says, "and whereas on August 29, 2016, the city council approved an ordinance prohibiting recreational marijuana-related uses and medical marijuana cooperatives."
Period. Semicolon.
Semicolon. Joyce?
I've got a motion.
I think Joyce seconded.
Yep.
I did second.
I'm not clear, Mr. Mayor, on the, the impact of...
We would just, the ban would be, is still, would be permanent, it's just there'd be an advisory vote on whether it should stay in place.
Got it. Thank you.
We've got a motion and a second for the resolution marked as Exhibit C with the changes as noted in the second, whereas, striking the words, "which prohibition sunsets on January 31, 2018." Council discussion.
Paul?
I have a couple of things. April 17th, April in 1917, I'm sorry, 2017, the voter turnout in that election will be about half what it would be in November of that same year. In November, it will be about half of what it is in this presidential year. It would be amazing if we got a 25% turnout. So I don't consider an April 17 referendum to be anything more than a temporary survey. I therefore will oppose this. If at some point somebody wants to talk about a November 17th, November 2017 referendum, I will at least listen to that. I would also point out that Councilman Boger, myself, the mayor, and the seat presently occupied by Councilmember Shoemaker will be up for election. Councilmember Shoemaker has said that as of this time, he does not expect to run for reelection. But, and that would make it very much an issue that people would understand and would get their ballot and would vote on it. It would create a much more credible result, whichever result it was, than an April vote. So I will be opposing this.
Mr. Mayor?
Fred?
First, I, would you feel the same way about school bond measures held and off your elections, Mr. Greenly?
That's not a council issue.
Well, okay. I wanted to, I wanted to take this opportunity also to clarify that last week, I did propose it having, occurring in November 2017, but it was pointed out to me, another thing that another, you see, I do listen. Another issue is that, do we really want our council elections in November 2017 decided on one issue, marijuana? And we'll forget about our position on transportation benefit district, everything else that we're doing. It'll just, that's what's going to shape everybody's vote. This way, it gets it off, out of the controversy, and we can, the city can go forward and have their elections based upon other considerations than marijuana, because frankly, this is not all that much of what we do. Anyway, I'll just leave it at that.
Other council members? Dave?
I can't support the resolution currently on the floor. I think it's a last-ditch effort to salvage a losing position. We already lost the vote on this tonight, and this is an attempt to keep it alive so that we can get a, a public decision on it. That's what you elect us for, for better, for worse. You got it tonight. I don't see a point in throwing it back to the public and asking them to give us political cover for a decision which will be unpopular in some quarters. I understand that, but it's also the right thing to do, and I think most of the people here understand that. So I regret, I can't support this one tonight.
Other counsel? Don, question for you. We haven't read the resolution. We didn't read it by title only. Do we need to do that prior to any vote taking place on it?
I don't think it's absolutely required, but we've done that in the past. This is probably my last one to read, so...
Let me, I will just do this.
I ask you, Dennis, consent.
Done.
Okay. A resolution of the city council of the city of Waschugle, providing for the submission to the qualified voters of the city at a special municipal election to be held, thereon on April 25, 2017, of an advisory vote regarding whether the city of Waschugle should allow recreational marijuana-related businesses and medical marijuana cooperatives within the city of Waschugle, and requesting the Clark County Auditor to place the advisory vote on such special municipal election ballot.
Thank you. So I've still got a motion and a second on it. Any other council discussion? Michelle, any comments?
I just have one question for the administration. I was wondering if you could tell me when the last ballot vote and survey vote on this was. I know the results, but I just wanted to know the dates again.
The statewide election was '12, I believe.
Correct.
And the community survey was in 2014, and that was conducted during the summer of 2014.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, as I mentioned before, it just, I kind of question when we have to keep voting on stuff year after year after year, I'd like to give it some space, and maybe five years at least.
Yep, thank you. David?
Just a clarification, Mr. Mayor. A yes vote in this case would subject us to a, an advisory vote, and a no vote would kill that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Could. Could kill it. Don't know where the vote's going to turn out?
It could come up again.
I got you.
There could, there could be four, there could be four votes for a yes and three no's, and it wouldn't kill it, so...
Could I say one thing?
Yep.
Not an emergency, though.
I really hope that, this is the last time we have to talk about this for a while.
Point of order, is this actually an emergency?
No.
So a simple majority?
Yeah. Again, you've got seven council members present, it takes four to pass it.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? I've got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution. Rose, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Boger?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Nay.
Councilmember Greenly?
Nay.
Councilmember Lindsay?
Yes.
Councilmember McDaniel?
No.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Nay.
Councilmember Corsi?
No.
Motion fails. Okay, with that, that brings us back to the second opportunity for any individuals that would like to address council. Okay. I have nothing before you for mayor's report. Nope, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel?
I'm just glad to see democracy at work. I've been before this council many times, and I enjoy coming, and I have a lot of people that I know, so thank you very much. And, Mr. English, you're going to retire. Well, congratulations, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dennis.
I should give my address. Dennis Helen, I live on 2818 I Street, Waschugle.
Thank you, Dennis. I have no items for you. Any items from council members? Paul?
I just want to extend my personal thanks to Don English.
Yes.
And I hope that I can see him again sometime soon socially.
Any other items from council?
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I think Jeff wanted to, he, he had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'll do it from here. I'm already on the record with my address. It's obvious which way you lean. I don't agree, so be it. It will come back, I guarantee that at some point in time. And if you're really worried about addictions to this community... And if you're really worried about addictions in this community, how about getting out there and doing some real research and work and see what's going on with opioids, heroin, and meth in this community? There are syringes in city parks, and nobody's taken any action on them. That's a fact. It's not a fact. Nobody can tell me if there are kids hanging around pot shops and hanging out. I'll guarantee you they're not. But there are syringes being used in our city parks, and our kids and everybody else are being exposed to them. So, let's do something about that instead of worrying about people smoking pot for their ailments.
Thanks, Jeff. Brett?
I am serious about coming back, and I know I said about two minutes ago that I didn't want to deal with this again, but I think there could be some shoring up of this as far as findings go, in case there is a challenge. And I'm sure you can do it. But, so, thank you. Thank you, Don, also. I enjoyed working with you for these four years and two months almost, and I'll miss you.
Well, I'll miss you.
Okay. Let's start this over. We're going to go back to public comments. Yes, ma'am?
May I ask one question?
Sure.
I'm unclear about K2, and what I understand about it is that it is chemically simulated, and so it's considered illegal. And I am wondering if that is also legalized as soon as we give these shots?
Let's talk right after this meeting, because that actually doesn't have anything to do with what the special meeting is that we have.
Okay. Thank you.
Unfortunately, we've got to stay, so, it's close, though. It's close. Any other items from the public? Okay. Any last items from council members? David?
I'd like to thank the public for coming out tonight. It's a difficult thing to disagree with one's colleagues, and having your support here buttresses our courage and makes it possible. Thank you.
I'd just like to add my thanks to people for turning out. There are more people in this room tonight and a week ago than we've had total in the past year. It's extraordinarily that we would have more than three or four people in the public here, and so I greatly appreciate people's willingness to come out and speak.
Michelle, anything from the phone?
No, just I would reiterate what Paul said, that when the people come out like this and write letters in, that it makes our job very easy.
Yep, thank you. Dave?
I'd like to put it in a little different terms of the section of the country that I hail from where I went to college and mostly where I grew up. Y'all come. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any last items? I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Michelle, thank you.